All right, I'd like to call the Village Board of Trustees for Village of Cottage Grove, meeting to order at 6:30 PM on August 15th. We are holding this as a hybrid meeting, meaning that we are in the Village Hall here, as well as we have some folks on the Zoom, as well as some that may be participating through the audio call, both of which those links are at the top of the agenda. So with that, we do have a quorum, you can see in the room here, and the agenda was promptly posted, so we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Item four is public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak. If you are from the public and wish to speak, we just ask that you share your name, your address, and your municipality, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes, just in case we have a few people that would like to speak. So with that, I'll be quiet and allow anybody on the Zoom or in the room to speak. All right, next then we have is discuss and consider the meeting minutes from our regular Village Board meeting held on August 1st, 2022. Any questions, comments, edits, or consideration for motion?
I'll make to approve the minutes from the August 1st meeting.
All right, thanks Sarah, thank you David. Any other, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next, we have a presentation from Baker Tilly regarding our Village 2021 Audit Financial Statements. Good to see you in person for a change.
I'm glad to be back.
You gotta pull it towards you.
Okay. Did everyone get it? And then, believe it or not, actually, not further away the better, but like, the talk gets good.
How is that? All right, all right, thank you.
Just put tape on the table, that's all.
Yeah, there you go. All right, well, thanks for having me. It's great to be back in person. Had our audit team out in person as well this year, so that was really nice, kind of a sense of normalcy. But I'm going to go over some of the financial statement highlights. You probably have a copy of a couple of, a few documents that came out of the audit process, one being the financial statements, which is probably 80-ish pages of a lot of information, so we try to boil that down into a few key, you know, highlights and benchmarks that we think are important for you to know about. And then, there's also an audit results document, which has a lot of required communications, talks about internal controls in there, things coming down the line here as far as reporting standards that the village needs to be aware of. And then you may have also seen some TIF financial statements, which isolate the activities in those TIFs, and then are used for the regulatory filing as well. So, but like I said, I'm going to kind of really just focus on some of the key financial information. Feel free to interrupt me with any questions, or save them for the end, whatever you prefer. But what I'm gonna do, and my printer is terrible at home, but you have some good versions in front of you with green and black bars, I'm gonna really talk from that document, and so we'll just kind of page through that and hit on the highlights there. So the first page talks about the general fund and the fund balance. So the general fund, as you probably know, is the main operating fund of the village. It has significant tax levy going there to fund administration, public works, recreation, public safety costs, and the like. This gets a lot of, this fund gets a lot of attention because of that, and generally, we can look at the fund balance, which is the equity, you know, your assets minus the liabilities in that particular fund, to see kind of, or make a judgment as to how the financial health of the village is. So what you see here is a fund balance broken up into different categories. The top line is your total, and then you'll see that there's an unassigned, assigned, and non-spendable line comparison between '20 and '21. So you'll see what happened since last year. The total, you'll notice, the total went up by about $132,000, so that means that the revenues exceeded expenditures by about that much in '21. But then, as we kind of analyze the different categories, we'll start down at the bottom, which is the non-spendable category, and there's some definitions down there too to remind you, but non-spendable really means that we aren't able, that's a part of your equity that isn't able to be liquidated for a variety of reasons. So, for example, some of that amount is tied up in prepaid expenses. We've already prepaid, you know, whether it's health insurance or other types of costs that are in there, and so we obviously can't liquidate those to pay our current bills. Also, what is in that non-spendable portion are some long-term or delinquent receivables that are out there, but the biggest chunk of that is related to an advance that's been out there to the TIF, TIF number six, which I see is developing nicely over here. That, that has been around for a number of years as, you know, there was debt issued, and obviously, you know, there's a plan to kind of re, reimburse that at some point here with the overlay TIF that was created as well. So, but that's been out there. Basically, we can't liquidate that advance, the TIF can't pay it, it will be paid at a future time, just not in the next year, which would make it current and allow you to essentially pay your current bills with that. So basically, non-spendable's tied up, it's, it's not really liquid. The assigned and unassigned portions are much more liquid, they're basically available to be used within the next year. The assigned portion really relates to the payment in lieu of tax that the water utility pays over annually to the general fund, and that is intended to be used for the subsequent year budget, so '22 where we're sitting now. And then unassigned is the remainder, and that's really what's left over. No, you know, nothing tying that down, it's free and available to be used for any purpose. So, you'll see how those numbers kind of change. They're, you know, somewhat, you know, somewhat comparable to the prior year with slight increases in the non-spendable and the unassigned categories. You'll see a very summarized income statement here with revenues compared to expenditures and actual compared to the final budget, and how that turned out as far as calculating that variance. So, actual, like I mentioned, was a positive result of $132,000. The final budget was a planned loss of about $50,000, so that, you know, nets into a $182,000 variance there to the positive. So, any questions on that so far? We like to see, you know, the general fund, you don't want to see it losing a lot of funds there. Planned use of fund balance is generally okay, as long as, you know, you have some reserves on hand, and we'll talk a little bit about that on page two. So here is where we're trending what the fund balance looks like in comparison to the annual expenditures. So we're really still focusing on the general fund here, and we take those assigned and unassigned categories that were from the previous page, and we compare that to the annual expenditures or the budgeted annual expenditures in your case. So, what this tells us is how much in spendable reserves there are equity, and to get you through like a certain percentage of your year. So, at the end of '21, the fund balance was about 38% of the annual expenditures in the general fund. The village has a policy in place that we're trying to get, have that percentage in between 20 and 30%. You know, the, you'll see over the last five years that it's been above that range, but still, you know, we know that that is watched very closely, and ensuring that it's not, you know, dropping too much at any given time, we have adequate reserves on hand in case anything were to come up. So, I, you know, being a little bit over that 30% mark, generally between 30 and 40 is where it's been, it's not unusual for a smaller community of this size. Any questions on the fund balance? All right, the next two pages, we're gonna talk about general obligation debt. So GO debt is secured by the tax levy, and both the, the village funds and the utility funds have some GO debt outstanding, and you'll see what those subtotals are kind of at the bottom of the page. The village has about $14 million in general obligation debt, and utilities have about 3.3 million. So a total of 17.4 million. There is a statutory limitation on how much GO debt can be outstanding for any community, which equals 5% of your equalized value. So that number is represented by the black line on this chart, and that just ticks up over time, because as your equalized value goes up, so does your limitation as far as how much debt can be outstanding. The green line down below shows your actual debt outstanding, so there's some space there, which means that you're not at your limit, which is good. Actually, at the end of '21, you were at about 38% of your limit. 50% is a fine place to be. I see percentages higher than that in developing and growing communities, so you're actually pretty low with that respect, because you do have a lot of development going on here, active TIF districts as well. So, that's actually like a pretty low percentage, I would say, in comparison to a lot of communities that I work with. There is, the utilities also have some revenue debt outstanding, which is secured by user charges. That, that debt does not get factored into here, but we did make a note that there's about $5 million of that outstanding as well. So, again, does not get factored into that calculation, but it is out there and secured by the, the charges that are charged to the users in those utilities. Any questions so far? All right, page four compares your debt service, so we're still, again, focusing on general obligation debt. So we take the principal and interest for the year and compare that to your non-capital expenditures. So this is across governmental funds. So we're looking at general fund, your special revenue funds, capital projects, debt service, all of those, and we take out the capital portion, because that can kind of skew things from year to year. And we compare debt service to your other expenses, essentially, so what percentage is that? And at the, for '21, it was just over 20%. I see the 20% mark being thrown out from time to time as being a good goal to shoot for, try not to get too far over that, because it just, you know, creates a larger obligation to pay that debt service on an annual basis. So, you know, again, with a developing community, I often see that percentage a little bit higher, because a lot of that debt is getting paid by TIF increments that are getting generated, so that does skew it a little bit. But given that you have active TIF districts with debt outstanding, and that's all included in here, and you're still at 20%, so again, pretty good place to be there. Any questions on the debt?
I was just wondering on that graph there, if you look at the above 2020, the 29.9% and the 25.7%, are those flip-flop?
Oh yeah, they are, sorry. I was moving them around, I think, and I think those got flip-flop. Yeah, you're right.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think that's the case on the 2018 line as well, so I apologize for that. Anything else on that? All right. All right, the, the last two pages talk about the utility funds. So, the first page is the water utility, and here, we all know that the water utility's regulated by the PSC, and there's a target rate of return that we're shooting for as it relates to, you know, the charges that we're collecting compared to, you know, our plant that we have. And so, the current year, the rate of return was about 3.4%, a little bit higher than last year at 2.37, and that just results from, you know, steady increases in rates. You know, if you didn't have a lot of plant expansion during a year, you know, the bottom of that ratio kind of drops down a little bit, so. But all in all, it's, as I looked at the, the trend there, those numbers or percentages have been right in line. You'll see in the chart here, the operating results, the green line is the revenues, while the black line represents the expenses from year to year. Again, we have a gap in there, which means that you're charging enough to cover your operating costs. Operating costs do not include, you know, spending on your capital projects, you know, building, expanding your water system, or, you know, building your towers or wells and that kind of thing. So, it also does not include debt payments, it includes, or it does not include principal or interest payments. So, when we think about like, why we need that gap in there, it's to pay those other things that aren't necessarily operating expenses. So, again, that's where that 3.4% comes in, so we know that we're making, we're charging enough to cover those costs. The unrestricted reserves section here talks about the unrestricted cash that the water utility has. So again, you see that information over the last five years. In '21, there was just under $1.6 million in unrestricted cash that has gone up a little bit. Last year was kind of a quiet year as far as capital projects, and so normally, there's a fairly consistent usage of cash to pay for certain costs, out of pocket essentially versus borrowing for it, and that just didn't happen to the same level in '21, so that built up that cash a little bit more. So that allows you a little bit more flexibility when it comes to funding projects. You can use some cash on hand, you can use some borrowing, or, you know, all or, or nothing, or a mix of the two. The last item on this page is the investment in capital, and basically what this shows is how much of your plant, you know, when we talk plant, we're, we're talking about your water mains, your wells, and your towers. How much of that is funded by equity, you know, how much do we own, and how much do we owe on it? And so, only 27% represents how much is being funded by, financed by debt at this point, 73% is equity. So, it's, we often recommend shooting for about a 50-50 split, so you're well above that. So that's also good news. Yep?
On the, on the top section, where it talks about the rate of return, if it's authorized to be 3%, but we were at 3.4, is that an issue?
Um, no, I don't think so, because a lot of years, you will fall under that, and so it's kind of like a, a goal over time, you know, where do we want to be? So one year being over is not gonna cause any problems. If you're way over consistently, that, you may have a, may have to talk to the PSC after that. Good question. All right, the last page is a sewer utility, so we know this isn't regulated by the PSC. So really what we're looking to do here is cash flow, make sure that we're covering our operating costs, and so here, again, you'll see, you know, the line for the revenues and expenses, and see that pretty much for the last five years, the revenues have exceeded the expenses here. You know, smaller gap in between, but not quite as, you know, you have a little bit more control over your rates that you charge here, so. And also, you know, your, a lot of your rates are reflective of whatever you're getting charged from the Madison District as well. Unrestricted reserves here also grew, again, another quiet capital year, about $2 million, means that you have about, almost a year's worth of billions on hand there. And then investment in capital for sewer, we have that 69 to 31% split, again, well above the 50-50 that's recommended. So, any questions on any of that, or any other topics?
Any questions for Amanda? She's excited about this.
Well, it's good when it's not a surprise to you guys, and you get good information throughout the year, and so this kind of ties it together for you, but yeah, if you ever have any questions, feel free to reach out. We have a, a good relationship and, you know, with the administration here, and appreciate, you know, any questions that come, and we appreciate working with you guys as well every year, so.
All right, thanks Amanda.
Thank you.
Next then we have unfinished business, and this is a continuation of the prioritization process, step five, for 2022, 2023. Do you wanna memo?
Just sharing my screen here, and I'll try to make it a little bit bigger. So this is a continuation of review of the top priorities, and the next three we're looking to take a look at are Parks and Recreation, which is number four, fire and EMS, and then Transportation and Multi-Use Paths, those were five and six respectively. So, again, MO just kind of outlines the things that we're working on currently in each of those areas. Probably doesn't, again, just disclaimer, it doesn't cover absolutely everything, it's just, you know, I take a little bit of time to review performance goals and, and everything that jumps out off the top of my head as far as what we're working on, and then I place in there what individual board members that submitted for this category put in, just so we can, you know, document how closely aligned or not we are in these areas, really just for the purposes of if there's anything that the board would like addressed sooner rather than later, otherwise, you know, we just kind of continue on into the next steps, which is the financial management plan and the budget, where we can start to implement some of this stuff going forward.
Any questions for Matt? Guys have seen this many times, so, but thank you Matt for putting it, and aligning the staff goals, so that we know kind of where we're at with each of these. All right, next up, new business. Another holiday for one of our meetings, discussing, consider canceling our September 5th Board meeting, because of the Labor Day holiday.
One thing to consider here, I was talking with Larry, and we might want to think about changing entirely from Monday meetings, especially with our, our growth and everything, be much more flexible on agendas when, when something comes up, if we were on a Tuesday or a Wednesday, rather than Monday. It would be better for holidays, it'd be better for board member staff, the public that might be taking a long weekend, even if it's not a holiday weekend, and provide a little bit of a gap where we would still shoot to have agendas and the packets out on Fridays, so it would just give even the board more time to review, review everything. Obviously, there's, it's kind of the, it's like the butterfly effect, you change one thing, then that changes something else, so we'd have to look at, obviously, conflicts with other, other committees, but it's something to, something to think about, if you guys are interested in that.
Yeah, and, and one other option would be also, if, just to avoid these conflicts, would be to just go to the second and the fourth Monday, and you'd never hit those, because we're dealing with this here every May and every Labor Day, every September. But to the extent it makes any difference, it also makes it a lot easier for you to, I don't want to speak for Josh, I don't know what his clients are like, but I think it makes, Monday's a real busy day in the region for services that you might need, and you get a little bit more attention if you're not on the same beat as everybody else.
Yeah, so not for tonight, but just something to think about, maybe it's a discussion item in an upcoming meeting, if there's, if we hear interest from other board members on this.
Ordinance, is there anything we have to change in relation to that, probably?
Yeah.
Yeah. But tonight, we're only talking about September 5th.
So I take it there's nothing of utmost importance for the 5th?
Not so far.
Yeah, not, not that I'm aware of.
I'll make a motion to cancel the September 5th Board meeting.
Thank you David, thank you Chris. Any further discussion?
I would just say, obviously, if there's something that comes up, we would at least send out an email, we'd try to find a different, a different date, but, we'll shoot, we'll shoot for keeping it canceled.
Yeah. All right, if there's no, no further discussion then, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Next up then, we break into reports from Village Boards, Commissions, and Committees. First up is Public Works Properties and Sustainability. Heidi?
Yep, thanks. So we met back on August 2nd, and we talked about the continuing work on the Bike and Pedestrian Comprehensive Plan, which is in draft form, and we'll continue to work on that. I'll come back to the Discuss and Considers in just a minute, I'll go through the rest of the agenda. We talked about truck replacement guidance. If you remember back, we wanted to prioritize sustainability, we passed a resolution on all the things that we were going to work toward with that, one of which was electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles when we're purchasing new vehicles. And the two vehicles that will be proposed for purchase this year, one, there's not an equivalent electric or hybrid vehicle that will fit the needs for that vehicle, so we wanted to talk about how to deal with that. We're not too far away from getting the higher power, three-quarter ton truck, but it's not quite there yet, so we'll go ahead and try and get something more fuel efficient than we have now, and then explore options for a hybrid or plug-in electric for the other vehicle that will be proposed for purchase this year. We talked about the capital plan in general, with all the vehicle replacements and their schedule. We talked about projects that'll be proposed for the financial management plan, which will include streetlight replacements and upgrades and Commerce Park, because a lot of the lights are out, so have to, those were purchased when the park was built to all match each other, and now Alliant can be responsible for those, and we'd replace them on a schedule, so that'll be a part of the financial management plan. We also had a lengthy conversation with Hydrate, because they, they have, you know, split on either side of N, and they have a lot of pedestrians crossing back and forth over N. So they were hoping to work with us to improve pedestrian safety for crossing N. We're working on the Bike and Pedestrian Plan, although we came up with kind of a quick tempor, or could be temporary, we'll see how it works, with pedestrian flags at the crossing of Progress Drive, and I saw those up in action already, so we'll see how that works out, and continue to talk with Hydrate about what they additional- works out, and continue to talk with Hydrate about what they, additional improvements they might want to partner with us on. We have the solar panels for the Municipal Service Building. The bid opening came in, we had one bid, that's in your packet. I don't know if you, Josh, did you want to talk about the bid, or?
Yep, we only had one bid. We had a lot of interested parties, we reached out to a lot of people, timing was a big, we talked about that at the meeting, timing was a big thing, a lot of people were nine months plus out, and we knew that going in, so we put the deadline, we pushed it into next year, we still only received one bid, the good thing is it was under the $300,000, that was kind of budgeted for this line item, you can see that in your packets, it was $239 for the full array that we were going to put up there. We even put out kind of a deduct to, to make it smaller, but we won't have to use that, we can do the full, the full piece. We were told by them that it probably won't be until next, next spring, which they have until April 28th to fully implement it, but it might be more March and April of next year project for them. They haven't fully committed, they might still get in this fall, but that's what they're thinking right now.
Bids from Full Spectrum Solar, they were actually the business that made a presentation to us, I don't know, two, three, three, four years ago? Three, probably? About potential options for considering solar on our buildings, so we have discussed and considered the bid award then in front of us tonight.
Any questions on the solar project? Matt, I think you noted that we had, your firm hasn't had an opportunity to work with Full Spectrum yet.
Not, not Full Spectrum, but we haven't, I mean, we've heard, they've been around, they've done a lot of stuff in the area. They seem like they'll do a good job, so. We've worked with a handful of others and, and some electric contractors that kind of sub out to the solar people too as well. We had a variety of people pull plans, but they were the only ones that bid.
Okay.
And some speculation that we talked about at committee was, they're all so busy right now that it was, glad that we got a bid on it from a, from a local Madison business, so.
Right. For a while there, we were thinking, well, maybe we have to extend the bid even further into all of next year, but people, at the time, as we were calling around while the bids were out there, said, no, no, you can leave it, you can leave it, and then I was like, well, we better get some bids, and we got one, so it worked out.
I'll make a motion that we award the, the bid for Full Spectrum Solar for the MSB Solar Project.
Second.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Musa. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries.
So, yep. All right.
Go ahead.
The next discuss and consider we have is about sidewalk ordinance, so currently our ordinances read that if a sidewalk needs repair or a new sidewalk would be in place to help complete our sidewalk network, that it would be 50% on the village and 50% on the owner of the property. And it can create a number of barriers for us to be able to expand our sidewalk, because that's a large burden for a homeowner to carry if we're installing a sidewalk in front of their house when there isn't one now, so you get a lot of pushback from neighborhoods when it's a positive amenity that makes pedestrian transportation more safe in areas where we don't currently have sidewalks. So, not that we would go ahead and install them all right away, but in the, in, within our pedestrian and bicycle plan, have kind of a build out on where we might want to bring sidewalks in the future. And then in the repair of sidewalks, it's, it's a heavy burden on residents when it's not their fault if there's damage to the sidewalk, but it creates equity in being able to travel across all parts of the village safely, especially if you have mobility issues, and not put the, and half the burden on the residents when the whole community uses sidewalks. So, this is to move that forward, is this the final recommended ordinance changes, or are we sending it to Larry and to?
I just took a shot at saving us as much legal time as possible, but I think we should probably still have them take a look.
He's not a lawyer, but he plays one on TV.
So we're looking to send this then to legal review to change the ordinance.
It'll probably take double the time now.
It's good to me, I'm not even going to look at it.
So, JJ, how many other communities have gone this route? And second question is, I know we do repair every year, and you and team, and now Brian, chase folks down, so even though it costs X, it's really X less your plus, because you've got a lot of staff time trying to engage folks. And then obviously, the, a lot of times that sidewalk is damaged because the village or the developers planted a tree on the Boulevard side, and it just, for whatever reason, pops that sidewalk, which is most of the time what happens to those sidewalks. So, several questions, but.
I think I forgot the first one already. Uh, yeah, I'd say 90 maybe.
Other communities, other communities have taken this route.
It's roughly one-third, one-third, one-third. When I've, you know, asked in the Dane County or just slightly outside that, where it's either 100% on the property owner, 100% on municipality, or 50/50 split like we currently have. So, never had a nice definitive easy answer.
I have seen, JJ, probably over the last 10 years, throughout at least this county, more trending, it feels like, of burying it themselves, just to be able to, they're becoming more padded and pedestrian friendly and being able to implement them in areas that are hard to get at, or people aren't aware that it's going to cost them, it's just easier for, for them to undertake. But no one changed theirs, I want to say maybe three or four years ago to, it was kind of like this, 50/50, and now it's 100% on the community. Would be a recent example.
I, I have the same experience. It is, I think the communities that still have 100%, let's say, special assessment, it's just because they don't have it in the levy, they don't have the room in the levy for whatever reason, the way their finances are set up. And it is the single most challenging board meeting, committee meeting, you know, it's the, you know, there's, you really have trouble accomplishing what you want to accomplish if you want to be very head bike friendly in your community, because there's such a hard pushback from people who get, you know, multi-thousand dollar bills, that it, you risk really undermining your policy, so I'm seeing the same thing. And if you've got room in the levy to do it and still accomplish your goals, you know, it's still taxpayer money, and everybody pays just a little bit every year, and when you get to them, they've, you know, it's, it's a lot easier for people if you can pull it off that way. I always recommend when asked to go with as much levy paid funding for public improvements as you can, as you have the ability to.
JJ, I have two questions. I do support this in general, I think, two questions I have are, let's just say my sidewalk is, is rough and I need, you know, and I come to you and I say, hey, take a look at this, how does the prioritization process work with that? You know, because I, I run a lot, I bike a lot around, and like, there's definitely some, some needs, right, but like, how, does the ordinance need to illustrate what the prioritization process is, or how, how would we, how would we communicate to the village? You know, because everybody wants their sidewalk to be perfect, right, but you can't fix them all at once, so how do we, how does that work?
Well, Brian and I have already talked briefly about it, that we, basically a plan would be to essentially keep following the sidewalk program until 2015, and we actually made it through the whole village last year. So the timing is great, we basically got our sidewalk map that maybe, maybe I can bring up.
David, are you maybe, are you thinking about something as far as standards on, you know, if it's a less than an inch, more than an inch, more than a couple inch? Well, I'm looking for something definitive, right, because I don't want John to be mad at Jeff, because, well, his sidewalk got fixed before mine, right, but if we have something that you can, something.
Especially now that the village is paying for it.
Right, um, even better, but like, if you, if you have kind of a metric-based kind of prioritization process, like, that makes, that, that takes all the, well, you got yours fixed before mine, that takes that out of the equation to a degree.
The thing, my thinking is, and again, I think we're looking to get this answer first, and then Brian and I'll sit down and see if this map still works, that's basically annually, reassess those areas, and there's, I've broadly speaking, just used roughly half an inch, a quarter of an inch can still seem like quite a bit, and it'll all depend on budget, but we were so bad in 2015 that we had to stretch that budget as much as we could.
Sure.
Basically, assess these, these areas, make the repairs you can, replacements in the ground, whatever method works the best, and then honestly, we've talked about, you just keep a list of really bad ones outside of these areas, and then any extra pennies go towards those.
Okay.
And just based on which ones.
That's good. And then last question, in section four, or A4 of your ordinance, so if I decide, like, my sidewalk is junk, I get it replaced, am I responsible for that stretch of sidewalk in perpetuity, or is that just that one-time fix?
If you, if you were not in the assessment area and we don't deem it making the, the cut on the extra, just that time, you can go for it. But yeah, anytime, we encourage adjacent property owners to take them on themselves.
Okay. Cool. Thank you for putting this together, this is cool.
I'd just add one other point that came up at committee, because I thought it was interesting to think about, in adding new sidewalks versus adding a new bike path in an area, because a neighborhood might be more interested in a bike path, but then that increases burden on winter snow removal and such, and we want to have a bicycle multi-use path network that makes sense and not have, you know, pieces in different spots, and some might advocate for that because the village is footing the whole bill for multi-use paths, where if we just put the sidewalk, then that is on the homeowner to maintain in the winter and doesn't become part of that, that network. And then I think, Brian, you had your microphone, was there anything that you wanted to add?
I'll, I'll add, since I know I'm talking, that I've tried various ways over the last two and a half, three years to either chip away or completely change this ordinance with very little traction, and Brian came in, in his first couple of months and got it done in two meetings, assuming this. I should have let him talk tonight since he actually got it done.
Well, since Brian, since Brian chipped in, I'll take it a step further. Based on the agenda and my review of the ordinance, you can just adopt it today, it doesn't need to come to me. I, I credit Brian for that.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the sidewalk ordinance as edited in our packet.
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Heidi, anything else?
Just, we talked about some of the ongoing projects, and I don't know if there's any, any questions on any of the ongoing road projects that was in the engineer's report, I'm sure Josh should be happy to answer any of those, just give you that opportunity. Otherwise, we meet, we moved our meeting to the 13th, because we thought maybe the board would be on the 6th, the day after Labor Day, but now we'll meet on the 13th.
Is there any update on the Taylor Street when that construction will finish?
So, on Taylor, we ran into a section of water main near the end that they found when we were making a connection that still had older six-inch main on it, so they had to order some more supplies and had to get back in and replace that. They just got done testing it and putting the laterals in for that piece, so now they're, they're ready to get back on the road. You probably see there's a little bit of sidewalk and concrete work down there yet to finish grading and then paving. They're not in a real big hurry, because asphalt, everything's kind of hinged on asphalt, and it will be for the rest of the year, on when crews can get in and when they can get it done, so they've kind of pulled and moved to other pieces. So that's Hamburg right now, and they're moving over to the Parkside to start, start some of Shaun's stuff, and they have a couple other jobs that they're working on too, until they can get the asphalt guys lined up. So I'm thinking, if I give you a timeframe, it's going to be closer to the end of the month before you see good grading down there and ready to put asphalt on. They, they put the first lift of asphalt on Ridge, you probably saw it going out of town as a request kind of from us to get that buttoned up a little bit, it was getting kind of rough and it was flattening out, so they got in and did that. When they did oak, they put the first surface on oak, but we're probably still two to three weeks away from Taylor. I wish it was sooner, but.
Have you driven on that?
I know somebody has.
You can't drive fast, right?
You shouldn't drive fast.
So I'm hoping they, I'm hoping they can start grading, and I will relay that message, because it is in the section that needs to be graded, is, is rougher, and now that they have the water main, and they could come in and do that, so.
That would be great. Outwield Bridge, do you know when that will be started?
That will start again when they're about ready to start laying asphalt, so they'll come in, they'll mill all that existing asphalt off and then put the two layers on, but they're going to wait until, until they're ready for asphalt, so it's not sitting there open.
Okay.
Yep.
You can drive your friend's car very fast on it if you want to.
Don't, don't.
Mountain biking on there.
Yeah.
Dirt bike.
Dirt bike. All right, moving then on to Community Development Authority, looks like we have an action here to consider. David?
Yeah. So we met on Monday, August 8th. We did elect officers, I was elected the chairperson, Sarah was elected vice chair, and then Jess Robinson was elected secretary. I'll come back to the Chamber of Commerce really quick, I'll come back to that at last. Then, then we partially approved designs and authorization of fabrication of the street banners. Right, Aaron, do I, do I remember that right? We, we said yes to the street banners, but we wanted to come back with the event banners, we wanted to get some more options.
Correct.
And then we did the window clings as well, and then Gabe made his introduction, and then we talked a little bit about the website redesign, might see some things in the budget in, in a year or two. Gabe's done a lot of good work so far on the website, so if you've noticed, changes, Gabe's the, the expert behind that. And then we closed the meeting. So, coming back to the Chamber of Commerce, they came to us, came and, they did a commercial leakage study, and the chamber would like to take another, or refresh the study, I guess I'll say, and were, asked us to partner on that study. And so we did approve that at the committee, and so now we're here to talk about that, and if there's any questions, I can, or Aaron, or Sarah, if you want to give any more color on that?
Brits online.
Two thousand, I think, is what, what they were asking for, is that?
Correct, yep.
And the last time they did this was, how many years?
2015?
2018 or 16?
15.
16.
Yeah.
16.
I saw that it was on the town, towns' agenda back in July, do we know if they?
They declined to participate.
So what does that mean for the study?
I remember asking Britt, she said the town declined, and then, so she basically said, now we're here to see if you'd like to participate, it seemed like a good idea to the committee members. We didn't really get into, well, if, how's that word, like, are you going to consider town businesses, like, we didn't really get into that kind of conversation, it was more about, you know, the benefits of the study in general, not necessarily town versus, town versus village conversation.
And most of those businesses are obviously in the village.
The, the overwhelming majority are in the village, yep, correct.
I'm just trying to think of the previous study and how that was completed, I guess, with the two municipalities and the chamber.
Just looking through the old one to see if there's any, any mention of.
We're designing Paul.
Oh.
Oh.
Cool. Are you there?
There she is.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, I was just kind of waiting if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer it, or I'll help answer as best as I can with the knowledge I have, but yep, the study was done in twenty fifteen, um, to my knowledge, I think the Chamber of Commerce paid for the whole thing, but I'm not a hundred percent on that. Uh, we did reach out to the town, they declined, they didn't really give any reason except for, I don't think it benefits them as much as it does the village for obvious reasons, um, with that being most residents live in the village, and also that most businesses are here in the village, um, is there another question?
Um, no, I think that was.
That's one of them.
Um, and that, well, I guess the other question I have then is, oh, I got booted out of Zoom, good thing I'm in person, um, is how how will the village be able to use this information?
Sure, so what we're trying to figure out right now is the supply and demand issue with our businesses here in Cottage Grove, so if you read the, if you had a chance to read the previous leak of leak of study in twenty fifteen, it did indicate some needs that that we needed in the village of Cottage Grove because residences that were living here were leaving and spending their money outside of Cottage Grove. Um, since twenty fifteen, as you all know, we have successfully increased our businesses, and we continue by the day to, especially what I see on my end, is new businesses coming into the village. This study would be a great, a great tool for the village of Cottage Grove and the Chamber of Commerce to say, hey, look, we did a study, we know what's here, what's not here, what people are looking for, um, who's who's leaving the village to go spend money on what, uh, what services, stores, um, types of types of stores, um, it does get very detailed. I think back in twenty fifteen, it was asking for more, or showing that we needed more restaurants, which I think we all agreed we did, and, um, the ones that have come into the village are now successful, um, so definitely a benefit for for both us as like the chamber and also you as the village, you as the village for more new economic development projects, us as the chamber, um, I see a lot of businesses come take over spaces that I'm sure you're not you're not always aware of, um, so it's nice to also be a resource to potential businesses to reach out to the chamber and say, hey, look, here's the industry, thinking about bringing it to Cottage Grove, is there a need, is there a want, um, and, uh, it would be great to have a an actual study done to show proof that there is a need for new new businesses.
Yeah, I agree with all of that, and then specifically, we use it, I reference it in our comprehensive plan in the economic development chapter, um, we'll use it, reference it in marketing materials sometimes, and then once in a while, a project will come forward, like Casey's gas station, for example, and a lot of people were coming to hearings and saying, well, we don't need a gas station, we have too many gas stations, and we could point to data like this that says, well, maybe maybe we do still have room for another one, or something like that, so there's actual data instead of just opinions.
I guess, Britt, the only question, I guess, statement I would, I'd say, having read, um, the leakage study last time, um, it it gave good ideas, but I think if there's, and again, I I don't mean to lead the witness here, right, but, you know, we did this with the fire study, and I really liked how we asked PAA to give us kind of a punch list, right, like a prioritization list of if you could do this, this, and this, and this order, um, and again, this is more just my opinion than anything, right, it's not a it's not a mandate, it's not not a demand, it's just kind of a something to think about, like, when I read studies like this, it's it's tough to understand what the priority is, right, and so obviously, it's all how you look at it, it's perspective, it's context, right, but like, when you pay for a study like this, you know, it's always nice to have at least the expert's opinion, unlike if I were to do this, here's what I, here are the top five things I would do in order, you know, so just something to think about. I could be wrong, too.
Yeah, no, appreciate that, um, we plan to use the same firm that did the previous study, um, and from my understanding, there's threats involved in terms of, um, flesh and backups, so there's there's going to be interviews involved, um, with business owners in Cottage Grove, um, and then after that, I believe there is a draft that comes in for review, um, and then hopefully have the final draft fed in this year.
Okay.
Is what our goal is. So in other words, whatever they come back with is not always set in stone because they pull data from their resources, and, you know, yes, and I agree with you on the opinion thing because we all have our opinions with here.
Yeah, sure.
We want, we need, and things like that, but, um, and so I think with those interviews, with those six business owners, and also a list of the businesses here in Cottage Grove will help determine a supply and demand issue that we're, that we possibly have.
Maybe this is too far out of the scope, but will it look at how, um, certain events impact businesses or can keep businesses in, such as like rugby tournaments or, um, Miracle League, um, or, uh, having a library in our community, how that draws people here or keeps people here?
Um, the first two, I I'm not sure, the third, the library, I mean, absolutely, that would show up in the study if it's if it's a, a need, um, you know, libraries draw people and people use other businesses typically when they visit a library, sometimes stop and have lunch, or want to put air in before or after, um, so that's a good question, I wish it had a yes or no answer for you, I don't, because the study hasn't been done.
Right.
But, uh, in terms of offense, um, I think perhaps not, I think this study is more focused on the businesses and what residents, why residents are leaving Cottage Grove, and what they're spending their money on, and then we can turn around and say, okay, hey, listen, we don't have a clothing store here, so if a boutique came into Cottage Grove and wanted to open up a small shop or something that sells clothing, we don't, we don't have that, you know, a little bit of core pharmacy, but that's it, so it would be more of that kind of, and that was just an example, I don't think that would be the same, like, that was an example of trying to figure out what we're what we're missing, what what's not here, and why are our residents leaving, spending money elsewhere, and obviously, the Chamber of Commerce doesn't just promote our members, but we also promote Cottage Grove first, and the importance of spending money in the village and town of Cottage Grove to help with our municipalities and and keep our local backstories here.
I just had a quick question for staff, it's a low dollar amount, so we don't, we don't have to be part of the selection of the, because it's below like a bid amount, right, is it two thousand dollars from what I remember from the, I don't have the memo in front of me.
Yep, that's what, so it's four thousand dollars total, the Chamber of Commerce will pay half, we were, we were just asking if you, if the village would be willing to pay the other.
And do we have that, I guess, that's a two-part, it's okay to, we don't have to be part of the bid selection, and then do we have this money built in the budget, or would this be then a proposal for next year? Or not built in, but available?
That would require us to be part of, part of that, and that could, that could be part of board approval is condition that we're included in the selection, but I don't think that that's anything that, you know, staff was asking for, anything like that. And then I think Aaron.
Probably want the same, just to have some continuity and make it easier to compare.
Yeah, and then, Aaron, um, I think you've mentioned the, or referenced that budget question in the memo, um, that you had a suggested spot for it, Aaron?
Yeah, I think either in planning or economic development, planning or professional services, I think we would have room to accommodate that.
Yeah, I should be wrong.
Any other questions from board members?
I'd make a motion to approve the request from Cottage Grove Chamber of Commerce to contribute to the update of the retail leakage study. Is it, uh, should I put a dollar amount on it, or as it as described in the memo?
I'll second.
Okay.
That sounds good. Thank you, Heather, Sarah?
Can?
Go ahead.
Can we have them come and give a presentation to the board, too, then?
Yeah, have who, the Chamber of Commerce or the Verbacher?
Verbacher, would they be presenting to the chamber?
Do you mean the study results?
Yeah, the study results, thanks.
Yeah, so the study results come in in a draft form, uh, via email, there is really a presentation necessarily, it's more, uh, we could set up a Zoom meeting.
So, but the, they're just giving you a draft report, not a final report, and not giving you any presentation on it?
They give you a draft, and then you you meet with them either in person or Zoom, um, and then if you have modifications to the draft, you can make them or have edits or suggestions, if you see some inadequacies, things like that, and then they go back, revise the draft, and then the final comes, so the final has to be approved before, um, we will put it up with.
So is the desire to be invited to that Zoom, then?
No, I just want a a final presentation on the final findings, is that something that they're going to do for the chamber at all, or you're just going to get a paper report and that's it?
Or maybe you, maybe you, Britt, from the chamber, could present the study results to us when you get the final?
Sorry, I didn't hear that, so this is cut out.
Maybe you present the final results to us when you get them?
Present the final, draft the final?
Yeah, to us, at the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you, Britt.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it very much.
We raise hands now?
Well, we're off my topic, but I have a live update for town.
Oh, all right.
Drum roll?
Yeah.
Um, they secured paving today for next Wednesday.
Okay.
Earlier than they thought, they're going to start fine grading this Wednesday, they have a couple of services to put in, fine grading this Wednesday, all the way through the remainder of the week, this is barring good weather, it's supposed to be a little rainy this weekend, they're only going to put down the the binder lift, then they're going to worry about restoring some stuff over on Oak and on Taylor, in the in the medians and off-road, and then do a wheel bridge and all the surface stuff together at once, which will come later, probably early in September.
Yeah.
But the road will be badly shaped for the week.
Was it because I was saying I was.
I told him, I told him you were really.
Driving too fast on there.
Yeah, you wrecked your car several times, and he's like, we're on it, we're on it.
So the, so the only thing we can ask for September is if we can watch?
Yes.
Please?
Yep, yep.
Especially in the horrible kiddos, first days of school, um, let's let's try to get that done, hopefully before then?
Right, yeah, we can talk about that more.
Okay. Thank you for hot off the press there.
Sarah?
No, it's all right. You did so politely, too.
I did, really.
Yeah. All right, next up, we have Plan Commission, and there is a discussing consider here, I'll take a swipe at this, and then, um, Heidi can jump into or staff. So, we met on the tenth of, uh, August, um, covered, um, now I like to always say landmark because everybody knows what that is, uh, the landmark site down on Highway N off of Coffetown there, and in Coffetown, they would like to put a new LP tank there, it's, uh, just an additional tank, uh, there are already multiple ones there now, this is just to increase their capacity, um, because of the fluctuations of either availability of LP, or the the they can time it better with costs and have a larger amount, I think it's a thirty thousand gallon tank, if I remember correctly, um, so they were asking for that, there's not a lot of site work or anything like that, the Plan Commission, um, approved the recommendation to, um, that application. Next, then, we had a presentation from Jeff Gregor, recruiter, from the City of Madison in regards to the intergovernmental, given intergovernmental agreement between the City of Madison and Cottage Grove, uh, Jeff walked through that outline, uh, they're using very similar, or the same outline as they have with current agreement with the town of Cottage Grove, um, we did ask about, uh, creating additional buffer on Highway BBB, BB, excuse me, Cottage Grove Road, um, they're designated one side by the cemetery, there is green space, and brought up, it would be really nice to have the other side as well, so you actually have, um, you know, have development on one side and cemetery another, and you blend right back into, uh, the village, so, uh, they're going to consider that, there was, uh, no action there from plan, just, uh, basically listened to the City of Madison present, uh, Matt was kind enough to walk through the priorities, uh, that we've all been experiencing.
I can make a few questions to that, uh, from the Plan Commissioners, but how do they really work in the direction of how they're going to go on this next year, and letting them know that that kind of dictates some of the budget considerations. So, uh, with that, uh, we do have a discussing consider here regarding, um, the application of the site plan amendment to add a new LP tank at twenty-five eighty Coffetown Road. Any questions? And Heidi, did I miss anything?
I think you covered it.
Okay.
I'll just point out, this is just a zoning review that we're doing, all the technical or safety aspects are reviewed at the state, and, um, Alcivia already has their state approval.
Well, I'll make, um, the site plan amendment to ask for Alcivia to add a new LP tank at twenty-five eighty Coffetown Road.
All right, thank you, Sarah, is there a second?
Sorry.
Thank you, David, uh, any further discussion? Having heard none, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have Police Commission, um, do we have, I see Dan on there.
I don't know if either chief or lieutenant were there, I I wasn't, but I I have seen, um, some email exchanges, uh, between the, um, commission and the recruiter, so I can give a brief update, um, they they are working, uh, the commission's working with Gov HR, the recruitment service for the, um, for, uh, the eventual replacement of Chief Labor due to his upcoming retirement, and they were working on a draft, a position announcement, recruitment brochure, uh, and timeline for that, and, um, I think they are planning to hopefully release the position announcement any day now, sometime this week, and then they would leave that, um, essentially, it's open until filled, but they would be accepting, formally accepting resumes until, I think, September twenty-first, and then they would just continue with the process, probably, uh, first round of interviews late October, um, a second round if they want to at some point in November, um, and, you know, all with the goal of, uh, a hire by the end of the year to coincide, um, smoothly with, uh, Chief Labor's retirement.
All right. Thank you, Matt, any questions for that? All right, reports from village officers, Larry?
One thing I can tell you is if you get any emails with the subject line, what was it?
Notice and demand of denial of the inherited rights of the people notice.
If you get any of those, just send them to Lisa, because she's already got three hundred of them today, but there's, I won't, I won't be surprised if there's also, that expands to to board members.
What is it?
It's a, um.
Scan?
It it's interesting, I'll show you.
Okay.
It's a, um, somebody's making some, um, pretty broad statements about the people having. It's a, somebody's making some pretty broad statements about the people having a poor recovery. It's apparently something that's happening all over the state, or at least the region right now, so. I didn't mean to say it thunderly, so, but I would, I would expect this kind of thing to spread. Just don't worry about it and send it to us, we'll deal with it.
Anything else brighter than that?
Did you want, did you want that many emails instead, you said, because Lisa got them all?
Well, I just, I just thought if you sent them all to Lisa, she could just tell me rather than me having to see all of them.
She forwards them right back to him.
Tag her it. Next, then, we have the village administrator. We have a new person.
Yes, so introducing, introduction tonight for Cameron Sawyer, who is selected as the next Finance Director. Cameron has been with Baker Tilly, our, he's been Audit Manager of Baker Tilly for the last five, five years, five plus years, and for a lot of that time being heavily involved in the village's audit. And Cameron has a bachelor's in, a bachelor's of science in accountancy, and he's a certified public accountant. We had multiple staff panels that did interviews, and it was unanimous to select Cameron. And, and then the, the discuss and consider is a, part, part of our ordinance is required that the village administrator nominate someone from staff to carry out the treasurer duties, so that's what the discuss and consider item is, but we can get into that next, but I'll give Cameron the opportunity to say a few words, if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you. As Matt mentioned, I've been with Baker Tilly the last six years. I'm very fortunate, I've worked with the village the last five years, very heavily involved on the day-to-day audit side, as well as the last two years stepping in as there's been absences in the Finance Director role. Really excited to be with the village, I'm really excited at the passion I've seen with everyone that I've talked with in the village, and, and ready to hit the ground running into September.
Yes, September, September 6th would be the official start date, so. That's all, I have any questions?
Welcome, Cameron, happy to have you on the team.
Thank you.
Would, this isn't a specific question for you, it's just kind of more of a logistic, is it going to be more full-time in Village Hall? Or is it remote, too, or what's the breakdown, kind of?
Full-time at Village Hall, same as any salary position right now. Our, our policy for work from home allows remote work up to four, four workdays a month. But we're also internally working on a, our, the personnel manual felt new to me because I, one of the first things I did when I came here, but then I realized it's been over decades, we should re, take a fresh look at that, and remote work will be one of the policies that should certainly be, you know, given another look. So that might expand a little bit, but certainly majority of the time here at Village Hall.
And since you brought up the handbook, does it have gender-neutral language in it as well?
It, it will when, I'm, the, the ones that have been updated, I'm sure are, but we'll be double checking that, and certainly the, the final, that would, would be, so.
Thank you. And welcome.
Thank you.
Any questions, Graham? Otherwise, there's a discuss and consider.
I'll make a motion to, to approve, is it approving or, or I nominate? Maybe I'm nom, I nominate Finance Director Cameron Sawyer to be appointed as our statutory treasurer of the village.
Becky?
All right, thank you, Sarah, thank you, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor, then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anyone abstain, motion carries.
Thank you for that.
Now he's sufficiently embarrassed. Welcome to the team. All right, next up is Communication listed business, and this starting off with, bless you. Consider approval of vouchers, any questions, comments with the list of bills?
Make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Heidi, thank you, Sarah, any further discussion? I was just curious, overhead doors, is there a story behind why we had fixing of overhead doors that missileed the building? Just one of those things that always pops up.
Oh, wait, they're, I mean, they're 20, 123, they're kind of practically basic, no worries.
Okay. Sometimes there's an interesting story, like somebody runs into it or something.
16-inch roll.
We seem to have a prevalence of that at the Emergency Services Building. All right, any other discussion? Having heard none, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain, motion carries. Correspondence, I have a couple that came in last week. A few citizens asked about just an update on the 300 block of Main Street and the speeds there. I think we've talked about this a few times, or shared this a few times. So I provided them with just an update on, on what was going on. And fortunately for me, that, that particular day, I talked, did talk to Chief, and we were installing the new, new permanent radar signs at several spots within the village, and one of which was coming for the, for those folks into town there, so that was nice to see. But there are a number of other things that I kind of outlined for them, and they were pleased to see that and that both the department, Police Department is working on, as well as Public Works. The other one I had was from a resident was asking about Senior Center and why we don't have a Senior Center here in the village of Cottage Grove. So I responded to his email, and then he proceeded to give me a call, so I had a nice chat with him, just letting him know what we've got going on, our relationship with Colonial Club over the years, as well as just some planning with various building projects of at least community space at this point, along with the various things that Parks and Rec put out there to, to bring folks together. So those were the two things I had last week. Anything from anybody else? Next up, then, community, upcoming community events? Think anybody wants to highlight?
This is a little bit of a ways off, but we started planning for it. The Christmas in the Grove Weekend Parade will be taking place on Friday, December 2nd, so I guess stay tuned for more information.
And if you want to go to a parade that's nearer than December 2nd, there's one in Sun Prairie on this Wednesday, it's a little closer. As well as Corn Fest.
Oh, I was going to say, it's coming up.
Make sure to get all your corn.
Yes. Bike the Grove, is that, can we talk about?
Bike the Grove, yes, there'll be more information coming on that, and that is September 17th. So we'll have more, utilize all of the great biking infrastructure we have in the village and support local businesses, so there'll be more info coming on that.
Wonderful. Anything from anybody else? All right, future agenda items, anything Matt or Erin or anybody else can think of right now?
No, nothing.
Nothing, I'm putting you on the spot.
We have, yeah, we have a while, right?
Yeah, a little while. Probably a busier meeting then. All right. And we will move right down to closed session items, so I'll make a motion to go into closed session, establishing negotiating position regarding the Deer Grove EMS District and joint fire agreements. The village Cottage Grove Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Scott Station statute 19.85, Prince C1, Prince E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Chris, I think. All right, and...